Other obligations and illness. And at this time, I'd like Troy Sprinkle to say the pledge and Chip Keller will say the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Father God, we just pause to give thanks for the blessings that we receive. We thank you for this great county and country that we live in. We ask that you be with our farmers as they enter the harvest season, be with our public safety officials who are out there constantly working for all of us. We ask that you grant us the spirit of humility as we go about the county's business. We ask this in your name, amen.
Record reflect that Vicki Kivitt, Troy Sprinkle, Brian Culp, and Chip Keller are in attendance. First item on the agenda is Monroe Township Fire District. Additional appropriation.
We need to approve our minutes from the presentation.
Oh, yeah.
For these guys?
Yeah. Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening. I'm Mike Wagner, Chairman of the Fire District. Good to see you guys tonight. We're needing a additional appropriation for $75,244. Basically, we've experienced more things we've had to spend out this year. So we've used up all we had capped out of the Q and Fund. But we're going to try to do some updates. The carpet in the station is from '06 when the building was built. We want to replace that. Want to replace some furniture that we have that's just absolutely wore out. We've got some bad windows on the west side that are terrible, terrible. We need to replace the windows. We had some trees trimmed. We also need some training equipment. We buy two sets of gear a year, which we don't have that money to do that because we're going to use some more than other. And then we had a truck down right now that's going to be pretty extensive. It's got to have a bunch of spring work and bushing work done to our big tanker. So, and it's just an '07 model, so it's time to, it's time to make this on.
Is there any questions from the board? Is there any from the public?
I see your financial advisors with you. It looks like you guys have plenty of surplus cash, so this does not jeopardize or...
Yeah, it doesn't jeopardize us at all, yes. I don't either. You have one.
You want to come forward and give your name?
I'm not really here for the fire department stuff, but I heard that you guys were having some trouble then. I'm Elliot Rainwater. And I think that in order to do fire safety well, then we should probably invest in you guys. Like, you guys do a lot for us. Having good windows, having a roof that doesn't leak, that sort of thing, probably would be a good idea. There you go.
Thank you. Mike, do you mind tipping that mic down a little bit? Thank you.
Troy Sprinkle make the motion to approve the additional appropriation.
Brian Culp, second.
Have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye. All against? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next, we have, for transfers, we have data administration, Jill Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, I'd like to transfer from the line item, which is an employee that we've never hired this year, and take that money and put it into contractual services since we are in a contract with Goodell Net. So I can use that money there.
This is consistent with their strategy going forward.
Right.
I don't have no problem with that either.
Yeah. How's it been moving over in the opening of the Judicial Center?
It's, I mean...
Smooth sailing?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to say everything was perfect, but if, I mean, it wasn't, but I mean, we did well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any questions from the board?
Chip Keller make a motion to approve this transfer of $59,481.
Brian Culp, second.
First and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carry. Let's jump up to the minutes, July 31st and August 5th. No minute, okay.
I'm sorry, that was left there as a placeholder.
Okay.
No, I don't have those. We do have the treasures and parks reports, though, for July.
And the council recognizes those were received by all of us?
Correct.
Okay, next, we go to Lit Economic Development Fund, Morgan County Parks, Kenny Hale.
Thank you. Just letting you know where we're at. We're asking for a transfer from the Park Directors Line Item into professional service, or contractual services, in the amount of $35,000 as to get heat and air in the Wilbur Community Building. It's never had air, and we are really starting to run it out pretty good. But they let us know that there's no air in there, so we really feel like it's going to probably even pick up more if we do that. Also, for the Delaney House, heat and air, it's had both, but it's not been for years. And that's what that would be for as far as the $25,000. That is actually for the Delaney House electric. We still have, we got one, two rooms, three, four, the two storage rooms and two main rooms, kitchen, and the dining room already done. Took all the old wiring out, the old investor trap, got the new wiring in. We've got the new panel in. We still have the rest of the house to pull the old wiring out of. We've already got most of the plaster off of all of it, upstairs and downstairs. We're ready to take the slats off, put the new drywall, it's already laying there. Get it up after we get the electric in. The Wilbur Community School, it's only got 100 amp. We need 200 amp, that's about all we have. But the instant water heater and everything else, we need the 200 amp. So it would be to just switch out the box, put a 200 amp in there and work with RMC, or, yeah, RMC. So that's what the request is. We do have the bids back on the electric, or no, on the heat and air. We've got seven received, still waiting on three more on the electric. We're still waiting on all eight.
Do you think it'll come in under these amounts?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Definitely should.
And on your agenda, it was originally advertised at 40,000. He is asking for 60, which is...
And it's actually into two different accounts, not just equipment.
Correct.
Right. Is there any questions?
Now Troy Sprinkle make the motion to approve the transfer.
Chip Keller, we're second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Carries four to zero.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Dedicated PSAP Dispatch, Zach Worth. Oh, not Zach.
Hey, thank you for having me this evening. The 911 Center, we talked about it a little bit at the last budget meeting. The 2025 budgets left off one of our salaries. Due to some contractual changes, we have that money left over in our AT&amp;T capital lease. And in lieu of an additional appropriation, we would like to move the funds from the AT&amp;T capital lease to cover that salary.
This was a shortage from first part of the year that was discovered?
Correct.
And we asked you to delay and come back later in the year, and that's what you're doing now?
Yes.
Is there any questions on that? Do I hear a motion?
Chip Keller will make the motion to approve the transfer for the 911 Dispatch Department.
Do I hear a second?
Brian Culp, second.
Any questions? Call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ordinance number 2025-10.
Okay. This is part of the modification of the lit income tax rate. So 2025-10 is an ordinance directing the supplemental tax distribution, which we have already received, to be first, used to lower the county's levy-free tax rate. So that money would be transferred into the stabilization fund. And then the next ordinance, 2025-11, is the ordinance modifying the lit rate, which is reducing the amount, the levy-free rate, and increasing the correctional facilities rate.
Linda, I know there's been a couple of questions on how this might affect underlying units of government. And can you just confirm that the changes we're making here will have absolutely zero effect to the underlying taxing units?
They will have zero effect. The levy-free distribution will remain the same. This is similar to what we have done the past two years, and their levy-free distributions have remained the same.
Perfect.
We're just, you also have the stabilization fund balance projections for 2026 that Tyler at Reedy Financial prepared. And that's, we're just doing a spin down of some of the balance in that fund. That fund can only be used for the lit levy freeze. So we're just kind of doing a spin down of that and redirecting that revenue into the correctional facilities lit rate to help fund the repairs at the jail.
And I did, I called Tyler independently after we received a few emails from one family with concerns on library funding. And Tyler confirmed also for me that the libraries, this will have no effect on their funding for this next coming year.
None at all.
SB1, in a couple, two or three years, is going to have an effect on every unit of government, but that's for another day. But for next year, zero change.
That's correct. And SB1 is no, that is no action that was taken by this body of government.
Correct.
That was from the state, so...
Is there any further questions from this board? Does the public understand what was just said? It will not affect the libraries currently?
I'm sorry.
Please, please.
No. No, this will not affect 2027.
No.
This is for 2026. This is changing the rates in 2026, does not affect 2027.
In 2027, because of what they did at the State House last year with SB1, they're doing a total reset on every county and city's lit rate. It's all going to go back to zero, and we're basically starting from scratch. So we'll have to re-implement any kind of local income tax. And when that happens, they can't even tell you for sure how it's going to work yet, so... But right now, nothing is changing for 2026. That's why what we're doing tonight has nothing to do with what's going to happen in 2027.
But you're saying no change for 2026 and 2027?
This change is only for 2026.
This is only for 2026.
This does not affect 2027.
But the library will be fully funded for the next few years?
They will receive the exact same lit levy-free distribution in 2026 as they are receiving this year. And I actually looked at, the DLGF does an estimate of revenues. And they, the Morgan County Public Library, for the certified shares, they actually will have an increase in 2026. Now, the Mooresville Public Library will have a decrease, and that is due to the way this is all set up. And Dan Bastin can probably explain this part of it better. But they had a debt rate from a debt that was prior to 2005. They paid that off before the end of 2024, which reduced their certified levy. So then they will receive less in the certified shares.
Small question?
Mm-hmm.
What are the repairs for the jail? Like, I wasn't aware that they were...
You want to come up again and talk into the mic?
We just asked that because the meeting gets recorded on...
All right. Well, I was unaware that they were going to repair at the jail. Like, what exactly needs repaired? Like, what all is the money going to be spent on? Just kind of explain to me like I'm five, essentially.
Sheriff's in another meeting this evening.
They have multiple issues at the jail. They have collapsing...
They have multiple issues at the jail. They have collapsing sewer lines. They have multiple doors that it's a security issue that they're needing to replace. When they came in for their budget workshop and presented for 2026, there's some very costly repairs that need to be done, and we can't afford to replace the jail.
Yeah.
So this is funneling money in that direction.
Fixing a deferred maintenance problem?
Yes.
Well, that's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
It's home to about 300 inmates a day, 24/7 operation, leaky roofs, malfunction plumbing. It's over 20-year-old facility. It's got a lot of ongoing issues that we try to keep on top of so it doesn't, just all of a sudden, we have to build a new jail. We try to keep the current one patched up and going. So there's a lot of things on the horizon.
Probably start paying for fixing the roof, then.
We try. Any other questions for Linda? Yes? Come forward, please. State your name.
My name is Bonnie Estelle, and I'm interested in when does SB1 come into effect?
It's actually phasing in over the next three years. So they are totally restructuring the property tax and the income tax.
So in 2027, we might just see what?
We'll see a little more effect. We will see an effect in 2026?
We will start seeing an effect in 2026 with many of these changes, such as the county, the circuit breaker credit, which we've maybe had 276,000 total. Next year, we go up to over 1,200,000. So that's a direct loss. So all the units are going to start seeing loss in revenue due to the changes. Many of our property tax deductions become a credit. So instead of reducing the net AV of the property, we are reducing the amount of tax that we collect. So this, and it's changing each year. They're changing the amount of the homestead deduction. They're changing it each year. And they're changing, you know, like they said, the county council will have to re-adopt their local income tax rates every year.
Right.
So all of this is a big change. We are not sure how it's going to all pan out.
Okay, thank you. And it's statewide, so all 92 counties are going to be experiencing, you know, learning how to deal with it in their specific counties. I don't see any further questions. Do we vote on this? Okay. Okay.
Brian Culp will make a motion that we pass ordinance number 2025-10.
Troy Sprinkle, second.
I have a first and a second. Do I hear any objections now?
Any further comment?
Any further comment from the board? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Ordinance 2025-11. Chip Keller?
I will go ahead and make a motion to approve that ordinance modifying the local income tax rates for Morgan County.
Do I hear a second?
Brian Culp, second.
Are there any other questions? Any objections? Do I hear, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries four to zero. For 2025-9-9, resolution declaring an expanded economic revitalization area within. Mike Dillinger, you're presenting that this evening?
Council members, good evening.
Evening.
Thank you for your assistance on Project Louis with us up to this point. Things move forward, and we're coming to you now with a resolution asking you to expand the ERA. The economic revitalization area is an area that is designated to allow tax abatement. As you'll recall, on Project Louis, we're not using tax increment finance, but we're doing tax abatement on real property. And so this is the first step of us coming to the county government to expand Project Louis' footprint. We have a property owner that has about 160 acres that would become part of this as well. And the developer and the property owners want you to move forward and are asking that you would include this acreage in the ERA so that it could become an active part of the Project Louis project area.
Is there any questions from the board?
And Mike, it's true that they also have land just across the county border there, too, into Hendricks County, correct?
Yes, one of the things you might recall, and we stated this in the public information meeting back in February, the EDC was the applicant for the rezoning. There's already ground that's zoned for data center development in Hendricks County. And so what this would help us do would be to take us up to the county line and maximize the potential footprint we could have for Project Louis here in Morgan County. And then, you know, continue in that effort to secure that maximum amount that we'd like to see within our boundaries.
Brian Culp will make the motion that we approve the request, the resolution number 2025-9-2-27.
It's actually dash nine dash nine, but I'm not sure what I...
Oh, I was reading it up here, so 2025-9-9-27.
And I will second that motion.
Is there any further questions from the board? From the audience? Come forward, please. Please, and your address?
My name's Diane Throley. I live in Hurricane Hills, Paragon. I think my question is, is we're going to add 160 acres to a tax abatement? That's the way I understand it?
Mm-hmm.
And this is the limit of the discussion?
Pardon me?
This is the limit of the discussion of this issue?
I mean, you're at, go ahead and speak.
I'm asking a question. Is, will there be no more discussion of 160 acres being added into a tax abate?
There's future...
I'm not familiar with Project Louis and its ins and outs, so...
Want to come forward? Anne Cowgars, our county attorney.
So I'm just going to make sure I'm understanding the question. The question is, is the extent of the discussion? This is declaratory, you're declaring it part of the economic revitalization. Confirmatory would be the next step, and it would be part of a public hearing? Yes. Public hearing on that, so it's not the end of the discussion?
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Did you, did you have any other questions for me before I sit down?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Come up. Go ahead and state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Elliot Rainwater again. I live at 2325 Goose Creek Road, Martinsville, Indiana, 46164. But essentially, again, I was kind of just wondering, what is this Project Louis thing? Like, how much of an impact on the budget would this tax abatement do? Like, I heard something about a database center, a data center of some sort, and I've heard those are not so good for electrical grids or the environment or some such. Essentially, I would like to hear more information on this before we go forward with something that, from 160,000 acres, that's, sounds like a big chunk of change to help with maybe the fire department or the jail or any number of things, other than a big data center. But essentially, that's what I'm asking.
Well, it's 160 acres, one six zero.
Oh, okay.
Not 160,000.
Okay, good. Well, that still sounds like a lot, but not nearly as much.
Currently, that ground is being taxed as a, as farmland.
Okay.
It's at zero.
At zero, cool.
So we'll tax that farmland. So with an abatement, it would abate improvements on that.
Okay.
But it would not take away from taxes that are already paid.
Okay, okay, cool, cool. Okay, okay, cool, cool.
And this is a subject that we have had many, many meetings on.
Wow.
Yeah.
All right, cool. Well, whatever was said in those meetings, I hope it was wisely considered.
Any other questions? Mike?
Oh, I have nothing further to add, thank you.
Fellow board members?
Call for the vote. We already got a first and a second. Yep, call for the vote.
Do I have a motion and a second? Call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
So folks, a little housecleaning from earlier tonight on the ordinance of the directing the supplemental tax distribution to be first used to lower the county's tax, or levy-free tax rate. I should have spoken up earlier. We needed to waive second reading, or just pass it on first reading and have it officially passed the second reading next meeting?
So on ordinance number 2025-10 and ordinance 2025-11, Vicki Kivitt makes a motion that we waive the second readings on each. Do I hear a second?
Brian Culpepper's second.
Brian Culpepper's seconds. Any further questions? Call for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No one opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Okay. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the 2025 public budget hearings, Harrison Township Fire District.
No, it's the request of the positions first.
Dree.
I've got, I don't have my glasses tonight, guys. Okay, Dree.
We have a request to fill three positions which are empty or going to be empty soon. The first one is two part-time workers, which we currently have had with the Morgan County Parks. They have been maintenance equipment operators. So we've had two resignations. So they're requesting to fill both of those positions. Do you want me to take these one at a time or all together?
You can do all together, I guess.
Okay. Purdue Extension is going to be losing, within the next month and a half, their admin assistant slash financial specialist. She is going to be retiring, so they're asking to fill that full-time position. And then, as several of you know, our county administrator has handed in his resignation. And we need, we're asking permission to post an interview. I know. Trust me, Chip, I have tried.
Yeah.
Have I not tried? Yeah. So I'm asking for permission to go ahead and fill those positions. It's three different positions, four people, because the Parks is two.
Two part-time, two full-time.
Yeah.
None of them are new, they're just replaced.
Correct.
Brian Culpepper make a motion that we give permission to fill those positions as requested.
Brian Culpepper makes a motion to approve?
Chip Keller will second.
Chip Keller's second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Recess.
We'll make a motion that we recess our current council meeting and open the, do we open them each individually?
I think so.
Okay, that we would open the 2025 budget public hearing for Harrison Township Fire District.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Troy Sprinkle's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Harrison Township.
Hello. I'm Brooke Shalay with 3D Financial Group in.
John Kennedy, President, Fire Board.
Eric Funkhouser, Fire Chief, Bargersville Fire Department.
Everything is similar to as we did last year. So the budget increased just slightly with the fire contract increasing 25,000 this year. And then we are also asking for a three-year growth appeal, which would generate about an additional 23,000, obviously still upon approval with the state. The numbers in the, in the form are just projections while we wait on AV, so. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Any public comment? Harrison Township? There being none, this is just a hearing, so there's no vote required.
Motion that we close the budget hearing on Harrison Township Fire District and open the 2025 budget public hearing on Monroe Township Fire District.
Perfect. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Second.
We have a motion to close, and by Brian Culpepper, second by Troy Sprinkle, and a motion to open a public hearing for Monroe Township Fire District. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Evening, council.
Hello.
I'm Mike Wagner, Chairman of the Monroe Township Fire District. I gave all you a sheet of paper here for you to future reference, to look over. That is just an overview of the last five years of Monroe Township Fire Department increases. We had the biggest month ever in runs, had 81 runs last month. So there's some overviews. We're running two-page standby around the clock, 24 hours a day. And it shows by adding another person what it's going to cost and things like that. So just have you, have you guys do that. And I'm going to introduce Fire Chief Chris Mills and our financial, our financial advisor, Mr. Peters.
I'm good. Thank you all. Jeff Peters with Peter Strankland. The budget as it's put together for 2026 also has an excess levy appeal for the three-year growth. Again, those will have to be filed with the state. Don't know how those will be reacted to at this point. The memo from the DLGF at this point has a very extensive list of questions for the growth appeal, which it has not in past years. I think the legislative intent was to kill that appeal, but the language in the new legislation didn't do that, so this is going to be the last opportunity. Their excess levy appeal amount potentially is about $37,000. Again, that will be a permanent appeal, so that will help them as they go forward, particularly with compensation for their paid standby. Budget is up a little bit to about 680,000, but it does fit within the revenue stream for 2026, assuming that the excess levy appeal is granted. And they do have a few hundred thousand there in reserve cash, so should be a responsible budget to go forward with. CUM Fund was reestablished at its maximum rate, the statute, which is .0333, which is up from like .0305 from the previous year. And again, those will be used for capital purchases. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions on the current budget. No. Jeff, how do you, how do you advise your township clients, fire partners going forward when, you know, the lit rate's going to get reset and all this? I mean, and no one has been able to explain to me yet how it's kind of going to flow necessarily. I mean, they have ideas. I know that there's 1.2 that we get to reset, and the cities and towns get a certain percent. But how do you, how do you budget going forward? And it seems like there's a lot unknown, and then you know the legislature's going to tweak something probably this, this year. So, I mean, how do you budget going forward?
You know, what we're starting with is '26 and '27. We're going to have a similar revenue stream. We'll just absorb those, excuse me, those new homestead credits and some of the other impacts coming out of there. But income taxes should still be very similar for those periods. So we're telling everybody, you know, hunker down, try and reserve cash. When we get to that 2028, what we're advising all of our clients who are not counties is to prepare their information, deliver it to their counties, because it's going to be instrumental under the existing law, or under the laws that's currently written. That .4 that you can implement for fire and EMS that is collected countywide and then distributed by mostly population, but also service area. That's going to be very important for all these fire districts, because if you implement that, you don't have to do .4, you can do anything up to .4. But if you implement it, it gets shared statutorily with all fire territories, fire districts, and municipal fire departments. So that'll be city and town fire departments. You can also choose to share with volunteer fire departments and township fire departments. So all of that will kind of change that mix.
Has anyone calculated to see if that .4% is going to equal all the current funding, all these places?
It is. I've done it in several different counties. There's a whole series of winners and losers, because now we're going from where for the last 45 or 50 years, we've distributed income tax based on property taxes levied. Now we're going to population. So, yeah, there are lots of winners and losers. Also, you know, you'll have the ability to do the 1.2% for you as a county. You'll also have the ability to do another 1.2% in the county outside of those cities and towns that are above 3,500, that have the ability to levy their own income tax. And from that, you can withhold 75%. And then under Senate Bill 1, I think it's Section 142, it talks about you will be able to also share specifically where you want some of that money to go. If you have extra money and you have a library that was a net loser, or a small town that was a net loser, or a township, and you want to make them whole, I think you'll be able to do it under that part of the statute. But like you said, on the floor, they said, both in the House and Senate, we got plenty of time to fix this, we know it's not perfect. So we're going to see, I think, substantial changes in '26 and '27 session.
It's a big jigsaw puzzle that's just going to change.
It is, and I'm afraid most of those changes are going to happen in '27, because that'll be our next long session. And as you know, you can't act on it until July 1 of '27, but you have to have it done by October 1 of '27.
Right.
So there's going to be a whole lot of number crunching that goes on.
Going to be busy.
Yes, very.
Okay, thank you. I just, I wanted to hear your view on that, so.
Any other questions from this board? From the public? Thank you.
Brian Culpepper make a motion that we close the 2025 Monroe Township Fire District public hearing and open the 2025 Morgan County budget public hearing.
Thanks, guys.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Troy Sprinkle's seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Four to zero.
Hey, Linda's here. Okay, you have the county budget estimate in front of you. We have two funds that, prior to adoption, next month in October, the council will need to make some cuts. And this is due to, the one fund is Local Road and Street, the other is the Local Public Health Services Fund, 1161. So you remember Tricia, when she presented the health budget, she talked about her carryover funds that she was planning on using? So the DLGF, when they're looking at the budget request and the available funds, they are assuming that they will spend 100% of what's appropriated in 2025. 3D Financial takes a percentage, they look at what, what we've done historically. And most departments do not use 100% of their appropriation, so they return to the fund. So what we'll have to do, we will have to make some cuts. And I've, I've been in touch with Tricia and with Eddie at The Highway, and I'm working with them on where we will make these cuts. And then in January, once we see how much they did spend, or how much they're encumbering into next year, and we see what's available, then we can come back after the first of the year and do an additional appropriation. Tricia is, she's confident she has the, the funding. It will be there. Local Road and Street, Eddie and I are a little concerned, but the MVH fund is healthy enough to absorb, you know, we can move something over to the MVH, 1176 unrestricted, if we needed to.
Can you tell me how much of each we're talking?
I believe Tricia's is 212,000. And Local Road and Street is going to be 275,000.
275?
275,000.
Okay.
The Local Road and Street, that's where he's paying for his salt and sand, the brine, the brine equipment.
Paving's not in there though, right?
No, the paving is not in there. Their vehicle lease rental and their equipment purchases, the debt payments. So we could move something over to the MVH and be okay.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions from the public?
Brian Culpepper?
I was just going to make one comment that, and I kind of said this during the budget workshop, but the general fund itself, I felt really good about this year, because it's basically a balanced budget that we've, we've got that is good, that means we're spending the revenues that we're going to be bringing in in one year, so I feel good about the budget this year.
Yeah. And when, on the Local Road and Street, Tyler was looking at, I guess what you would call kind of a miscellaneous revenue line. And he said, you know, that was for reimbursements and refunds that they receive. But that amount was an insurance payment for a tractor that had burned. So we can't count on that, and we hope we don't see that.
It's a one-time thing.
Yeah.
Better be a one-time.
Yeah.
If that's recurring, we're in trouble.
Do we have a motion and a second to adjourn?
We adjourn the 2025 budget public hearing for Morgan County and reopen the regular county council meeting.
And I will second that motion.
Brian Culpepper, seconded by Troy Sprinkle. Okay, we're back in session, Morgan County Council meeting. Other business, Mr. Adams? Commissioner Adams?
Thank you. Well, Mr. Swine. It's kind of a pleasure to be here, and thank you. Want to, I guess you'd say as a courtesy, at our last meeting, we passed the second reading of our ordinance to establish a park board. We've been without kind of a statutory correct park board since, I think, about 2019. I'd like to thank Ann for her work in going through the IC code. It's kind of complicated, really. But in that respect, I wanted to inform you, and if you probably read it in the paper, good old correspondent, that the USA Council will be appointing two members, it'll be a five-member board. The council will be appointing two, one R and one D. The commissioners will be doing the same. And the county assessor will be appointing the fifth. So we have 90 days to get it done, and they'll be taking over the actions of the park board, getting a superintendent, all that kind of stuff. So just want to let you know what's cooking. And it's been in the paper, so we're getting some calls. But you got two important members to put, because the park board is very, very active and very much part of our county service and actually our economic development.
By when do you want those submitted?
I'm sorry?
When do you want those submitted?
Before 90 days.
Probably next meeting would be better than this.
The sooner the better.
I do have one person who approached me and asked, his name is Jason Whitlow. He's a Morgan County resident, of course. He has been through the Morgan County Leadership Academy. I know that he helped Kenny on the cabin at Waverly Park. He's been quite active in the community. So he's one I'd like to make sure we consider. And I called and talked with the Democrat chair. He said they're meeting Wednesday, and they would look to get us a name.
Okay.
So you make your appointments, we'll make ours, and we'll talk to Reva and.
Don, are you working on the 250 Committee? Can you give an update on that?
I'm not on that committee.
Next year is our 250th anniversary. Next year is our 250th anniversary.
State, and I don't know who's, who's going to be representing.
I know Patty Dow is on there, and I don't know who else.
Yeah.
I'm not hearing much out of it.
On a different subject, and I'll make this brief, we are putting together some things for, speaking of the history side, we're putting together some ideas for Morgan Hall. You know, we have the one mural, but we have along the wall, we're going to be looking at, at putting a program together. I, I'll send an email to you on that, because I think it'll take some involvement. And we're not in a rush, it's not a, we want this thing to be educational and beautiful both. And so we're, we've got some ideas, I think, that we'll share and get your involvement. But that's, that's a little different than just the park board stuff, but I thought you should be informed about that.
And from the history side of things, tomorrow night, 6:30 to 8, out at the Fox Cliff Manor House, the County History Museum is giving a presentation on Frank Brown Shields, who built the manor house, and that was his farm, and he was the inventor of barbasol shaving products. So if you want to come out and hear about that, you're welcome, it's free admission, plenty of parking, and everyone's invited.
Well, please include in that that my dad went out there with, and sold full of brushes to.
To the barbasol man?
Well, he was the helper.
Oh, okay.
But the guy that did it, I can't remember his name, I always knew him as Pecan Pete, because he made little pecan toys and gave, gave to me when he was an older man. But he and Dad were full of brush salesmen at one point.
Well, thank you all for tolerating me tonight. We heard of our, yes.
Is this Josh's last meeting?
Will it be? It is?
Can I, can I just take a moment then, and I want to publicly thank Josh Messmer. I got to know Josh first when I was on city council, and Josh was working for the city of Martinsville. I've nev, never met a finer guy who really cares about his community, both when he was with the city and here at Morgan County especially. Such a talented guy, I mean, the fact that he's born and raised here was just a bonus. But to have an engineer, an MBA, to be working with the county as the administrator for the last, how many years was it, Josh? Four? A long time, almost six, okay. You've, you've done tremendous sayings, and I just, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you, and I wish you the best.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
You want to say anything? Kind of drift off into the sunset, right, when the day comes?
We will miss him tremendously.
There being no further items on our agenda, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Chip Keller, second?
Brian Culp.
Brian Culp. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried, four to zero. Thank you, and be safe going home.